Welcome you to the May 10, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Pinehurst Villages Council. We have interesting and lengthy agendas today at the regular meeting and at the work session. I hope you'll all be able to attend that. And as a reminder, those of you that are in the room, if you want to speak under public comments at the end of the regular meeting in a while, please sign the sign up sheet at the back of the room. The clerk will take that up momentarily, and I'll use that in guiding public comments later on. Those of you that may be listening to this meeting via live stream, we're happy that you're doing that. If you have comments that you wish to make to the council, you can email those to the village clerk during this meeting or at any time. That email address is publiccomments@vopnc.org, and those comments will be received by the clerk circulated to the council and appropriate staff at a later date, but they will not be read this evening. Also, those of you who are here, if you have printed versions of the comments you may be making verbally tonight, the village clerk will appreciate a copy of that and can accurately get your comments into the record. So having called the meeting to order with those comments about the format and the agendas a bit tonight, I'll go to Agenda Item Number Two, which is reports from the village council and the village manager, and I'll call on Mr. Sanborn at this time.
Thank you, John. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you very much, Jeff. The Mayor Protem and I attended the Partners in Progress meeting earlier today, and I'm going to ask Pat Pazella to make a few updates to what we heard this morning, noting, of course, that Natalie Hawkins, the Executive Director of Partners in Progress, is also with us tonight. Natalie, we welcome you. We'll talk to you a little bit later. Pat, on your report?
Yes, thank you. Main thrust of this morning's meeting, aside from an excellent presentation regarding the administrative things that the Partners in Progress go through, the budget and quarterly reports and so forth.
Pat, step up to your microphone a bit, please. Thank you.
Okay. Aside from the regular reports we get from the Partners in Progress, I thought the best takeaway to share with the residents of Pinehurst would be the observation by Natalie and others that there is quite a lot of development going on in the counties that border Moore County, and that there will be, because the developments are sort of larger than the usual development, shall we say, there's going to be a sort of a spillover effect, in the best sense of that word, regarding Moore County. And Moore County will be preparing to try to attract some of the types of support services and support industries that would be working hand in hand with these larger development projects that are going on. So that presents opportunities and challenges for those of us in Pinehurst, but I think we're well positioned for that, and it's particularly helpful that the Executive Director of the Partners in Progress used to work for the village of Pinehurst, so we know we'll get a fair shake. And other than that, it was just a good, solid meeting with a lot of interesting questions and sort of projections of what might go on down in the future. So the mayor and I both were there. Along some other announcements I wanted to make is that last week I had the opportunity to attend the Village Arboretum Spring Garden Party right over here, and they unveiled some plans for the future on how they're going to do a little more development in that area. It was very well done, impressive. The mayor was a bartender for a little bit, and he did a good job there also. But again, they're building on the success earlier of the arboretum, and I think that's something the village is very proud of. I also had the opportunity to attend the education summit of Moore County that was held in this room this past weekend, and I was surprised pleasantly about, one, the excellent attendance, and, two, something I wasn't aware of, which was the wide array of options for educational choices for parents and their children in Moore County. Moore County Public Schools were at this summit, but so were, I don't know, a dozen or 15 other non-government schools. And when it comes to attracting residents and attracting industry, I think one of the questions that's always posed is what are the educational options for a family that relocates here? And my takeaway from that, I was there for about two hours, it went on for about four, is that there are a lot of options and good options here in Moore County for people who come and wonder where their kids might go to school. So I found that, again, pleasantly surprising. And I also had a chance to meet for the first time with Karen Kaplan, who's a Keep Moore County Beautiful organization that I've been trying to reach out to and find out more about, since I know myself, fellow council members, and I think most people in the village of Pinehurst, particularly those of us who helped pick up garbage a few weeks ago, are very interested in keeping Moore County beautiful. And so they're going to continue to be active. The one thing she pointed out to me is that it'd be nice if there was a recycled trashcan down in the village, so I'll just put that out to those who have a say in that on our staff to think about that. And a couple other items, I did also attend last week the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and observe their progress on our small area plans, which eventually will be reaching us, but it was an engaged discussion and a lot of thoughtful comments there. And two other items, one, it was noted last week that we had a record-high 41 viewers watching us here streaming live. Now, 41 doesn't sound like a lot, but it was a record-high. And I'm mentioning it because I think most of you know that I've been a champion of getting citizens more and more involved in their government, asking them to try to join advisory committees and try to attend council meetings. So if you can't make it, see if you can watch us on the tube, you can watch us later on. But we really need citizens in the village of Pinehurst to participate with the amount of time they have. Not everyone can give the same amount of time, but if they can give a little time, I think it'll make a difference to us all. And finally, I did, I heard from one resident who enlightened me on something I wasn't aware of, so I'm going to mention it. It has to do with the fees that the village homeowners pay for when they're going to do some major or minor project on their home. And this individual was doing a major project of changing his roof from, I think, shingle to metal, and he called me to tell me he found out he had to pay a $500 fee. So I checked into that, and he does have to pay a $500 fee. It's on our chart of fees, and it sounds large, but it's been approved, it's a fee. And the reason I mention it is I hope residents, you know, keep paying attention to these things, bring them to the council's attention. I wish I had known off the top of my head what the fee was, but I did not, and I do know now, and I promised this resident that I would raise it so that other citizens are aware. And the council, in the future, we can analyze whether or not that's too high or too small. I think the rule of thumb is you should be paying for the amount of services you're receiving from the village, and that's what we have figured out, is the amount of services to analyze the impact of a project you may be working on in your home. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bosch?
Thank you, John. I have one thing. I attended the B-PAC Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee yesterday. They are extremely grateful the council approved last week extending the walkway on Pine Vista and then one on McKenzie. They also looked at a list of potential projects, and they put them in priority order, and staff is going to be taking a look at those to see what might be feasible going forward, but they're really excited about getting underway again with putting some walkways into the village. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan?
I've got nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Hoagman?
I have nothing to report either.
Okay, with that said, we'll move on to Item Number Three on the agenda. That's a motion to approve our consent agenda. As always, I'll just check to see is there any part of the documents in the consent agenda that a council member wishes to discuss or pull out for later action. Seeing none, we'll proceed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve all the items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pazella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion and Consideration of a Partners in Progress Economic Development Agreement. Jeff?
All right, thanks, John. I think maybe we'll get Natalie to come forward. Of course, I think most folks understand that the village of Pinehurst has historically been a partner in Partners in Progress here in Moore County, and I think most people understand that that's a public and private collaboration effort. The entity, Natalie's entity, works as Moore County's economic developer, and as such has also worked as the economic developer for all of the municipalities in Moore County. Historically, that's been based on a formal written agreement between Partners in Progress and Moore County, but Natalie's recognized that there is not a similar agreement structure in place between Partners in Progress and all of the municipalities in Moore County, so she's trying to rectify that with a proposed agreement for you to consider. Go ahead, Natalie.
That was a great summary, Jeff. Thank you, I appreciate that. Like Jeff mentioned, the Partners in Progress organization has had a contract with Moore County for economic development services since 2015, so for the last eight years. And when I took this role one year ago today at Partners in Progress, I recognized the need for a contract with our local governments as well. We do have five governments that participate in Partners in Progress in addition to the county, that's the village of Pinehurst, the town of Southern Pines, town of Aberdeen, town of Carthage, and the town of Robbins. So all five of those municipalities are members of Partners in Progress. And so what we have before you is a draft agreement that we developed using the contract that we have with Moore County. It outlines our services and it outlines the fee for those economic development services many years ago. I kind of liken this to the situation many years ago when I was the finance director here. The village didn't have a contract with the Given Memorial Library for services, and the village just wrote a check, and, you know, they had put the money in the budget and wrote the check. And we rectified that situation and formalized that agreement and that contract for services that are truly public services. So you have that in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the contract or some of the things that we do. And thank you, Councilmember Pazella, for your update, and for you, Mayor Strickland, for faithfully attending our Partners in Progress board meetings. I appreciate you being there.
You're welcome. It's always good to be there. Questions from council about the contract? This is the first time we've had a contract, as Natalie has said. There may be some ideas that we want to express back to you, so I'll just see here, are there any questions or comments of Natalie at this point in time? Pat?
Yeah, I don't have one of Natalie per se, though. I do want to point out that the Partners in Progress are now residents of the village of Pinehurst. They're right downtown here, so that should go.
That's true.
Should not go unmentioned.
We moved our offices to the village of Pinehurst. That's a true statement.
My question, one to Natalie, does the Moore County Chamber of Commerce contribute to you all?
They are an ex officio board member, so I'm a board member on the chambers board, and they're a board member on our board, but we do not trade dues or...
No financial contribution.
No money.
And this is perhaps best for village manager, are there other private organizations that the village of Pinehurst contributes to?
No, historically, the only other private organization we've contributed funds to was the Given Memorial Library and Tufts Archives, and as Natalie mentioned, that was through a contractual arrangement as well.
Pat, do you mean, well, do you mean other government authorities or advisory boards, like Partners in Progress or the CVB or...
Well, I would, maybe I used the wrong phrase, but I would consider the CVB somewhat of a private, certainly, it's not a part of the government of Pinehurst.
Right.
And so I didn't know if there were other type of organizations. I don't, we don't contribute to the Moore County Chamber of Commerce, I assume.
No.
And so that's why I was looking for some other type of organization.
No other private organizations.
No other private organization. Okay. Okay. I have any questions?
Other questions? Jane?
Do you find, and you've only been there for a year, but do you find that there's ever conflicts between the different towns that you work with when it comes to how they want to develop, or if they're, two towns are both interested in the same piece of development or...
I wouldn't say I've seen conflict between the towns. I think every town is uniquely different and has different economic development goals. You know, what Pinehurst may want may be very different than what Robbins wants, for example, or is important to that community. So I take my direction and my lead from you and your staff as to, you know, what is a priority and where we should, you know, focus our efforts. From time to time, you know, I would say that it does get a little bit challenging in making sure that all the parties sometimes get on the same page, if there are multiple parties involved, but not necessarily different towns having conflict. Thank you.
Other questions? I've got, Lydia, please.
I don't have a question, only a comment. I'd asked Jeff over the weekend what arrangement had been with you in the past, and I guess what I heard was that the dues have been 23,100 since 2019, for the 10 years prior to that, 22,000, so that's a pretty flat rate for a very long time. So that was helpful information, because I couldn't figure out why we were looking at a written agreement all of a sudden. It was because we hadn't had one, and then I got the dues information, so that was helpful. So thank you, Jeff.
Jeff Morgan, any questions? Natalie, you listed the five municipalities in Moore County that have arrangements, or are they all signed at this point in addition to the county other than ourselves?
The town of Aberdeen is signed, the Moore County is signed, I'm here tonight, and then I go to town of Southern Pines on May 23, and I have not scheduled Carthage or Robbins yet.
Carthage or...
Robbins.
Oh, Robbins. Now, does that mean that none of the other remaining six municipalities in the county are being approached by you for a formal agreement like this, or are they to be later added?
Have not reached out to the other towns that are not currently members of Partners in Progress, if that is your question.
So the five that are signing have been contributors for some time to Partners in Progress, such as ourselves?
Yes, sir.
And we're paying 23,100, as was referenced. I know that's not the common, I don't believe that's a common amount for all of us, but that's what we pay, and the others are paying on some basis?
Correct.
Okay. And do you remember how that basis was started? How did we get to 23,100 or whatever else Southern Pines or Aberdeen may do? I don't know.
I remember being the finance director, and the number coming in is the number.
Yeah, you may have set that number, wait till you think about it.
And I do, I cannot tell you what the basis is for the funding formula that's used currently, which is why I mentioned in our board meeting this morning, my first budget coming out, you know, the first budget that I've developed, I felt it was most appropriate to keep the funding levels the same until we could fully understand, you know, what the funding structure needed to be going forward. So we hope to study that next year and figure out if there's some adjustments that might need to be made. To Lydia's point, to go 18 years with one 5% increase is probably not sustainable.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I heard that correctly. What was the comment you just made?
In terms of the rate, the rate Lydia mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah, that there's been only one increase in our dues in 18 years, roughly, and, you know, that's probably not financially sustainable long term, so it's something I just want to study next year, which is what I mentioned in the board meeting this morning.
Right. And is the document the same among all the five or six communities?
Yes, sir.
It is? All right. The only thing that struck me, and I think maybe this is something we'll work on with you over the next year, parts of this contract or the way it's worded may or may not fit Pinehurst exactly as it might be required for one of the other towns in the county. So I think as we go forward on this, there might be a way to word this in a little bit different manner in some sections and for council's decision on that.
Absolutely happy to do that. You just let me know how you might want to modify it.
Okay, all right. Jeff, I think you had a comment there.
John, this isn't necessarily going to answer the question, but reference your question about how the dues were originally assigned. My recollection is that I had a conversation with Pat Corso several years ago about that, and he told me that they were originally set either proportional to population or to tax value, but I don't recall which. There was some sort of proportional system that was used.
I didn't think it was just drawn out of the sky. I thought it was based on population or some other issue at the time when Pat set that up. All right, well, those are my questions, and I'm happy with what we have and look forward to working with you on recrafting this a little bit, but on issues related to development, especially around the golf industry, which is where we're focused, as you know. Just checking, Pat?
Yeah, one more question. Is Pinehurst among those five government entities, those five communities, is Pinehurst the largest dues payer?
You are not.
We are not. Okay.
The other questions from council? All right. I believe we have a motion on this Partners in Progress contract as well, and would somebody please take care of that?
I move to authorize the mayor is designated to execute a one-year agreement from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023 with Partners in Progress for an appropriation of $23,100 to undertake efforts to promote economic development within the village and its extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Thank you very much. That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Pat Pazella. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Natalie, good luck, well, not just good luck, good work. We look forward to working with you, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you, and it's good to be back here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good to have you here. We'll move on to Item Number Five, and as we do that, I just want to remind all the council members and other staff who may be speaking, we need to be careful with our microphones. The 41 people that were listening last time reported some difficulties in hearing some of this, or at some points with different microphones, so we'll try to do our best with that. But moving on to Item Number Five, Mr. Sanborn?
Thank you, John. You all know that we have a vacancy upcoming to fill on our Historic Preservation Commission, and we're fortunate to have Cara Mathis with us here today. Maybe Cara can come on forward in case you have some questions for her. Cara is obviously a resident of the village, lives in the Historic District on McCaskill Road, very historically minded, a lot of good experience working in significant ways with the Pines Preservation Guild in the past, and myself and Alex Cameron and Eric Von Salson interviewed Cara a couple weeks ago, I guess it was, time's flying here, but we're very impressed, and we're pleased to nominate Cara for that vacancy, for your consideration. Darren Burts was not available to participate in that interview that day, but he also concurs with our recommendation.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Welcome. This is an opportunity for you to ask some questions of us if you wish and vice versa, and I'll just start off with a couple of points. We were able to read a little summary that you provided, I think, on your application form, but for the benefit of all of us here and people who are listening as well as in the room, could you summarize a little bit about your background and qualifications for this and how you heard about the opportunity, Cara? Thank you. And again, the microphone won't bite you, just be right there, and I think you'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Hi, nice to meet you all. I'm Cara Mathis. My family has been a part of Pinehurst since 2008, and my husband and I just moved here permanently a year ago with my son. More than history and architecture, I have a love of Pinehurst history and architecture, and I think it's something that we need to preserve because it's one of the things that draws people to this place in the first place. And I think especially with people of my generation moving in and the influx that we've seen, I really hope that I can help bridge the gap between, any existing gap between people who have been here for a very long time and appreciate that history and the people who are coming in who are drawn to it, who might not understand just how deep it goes. So essentially, I work very proactively, and I have a lot of ideas. I've worked in government, so I know the government pays, but I have a lot of ideas for how we can kind of help organically grow an appreciation for the beauty and the history and the architecture of this area and make sure that it maintains itself for the rest of time.
And can you talk a bit about your educational background or orientation into this field?
Yeah, so I am not formally trained in architecture, but I am a sketch artist, and architecture is my main medium, I guess, but my background is in linguistics and criminology, and I worked for the FBI for 10 years, but art has always been my passion, and architecture has always been my passion. So when we moved here and I found the Pines Preservation Guild, I did marketing for them for some time. And I love Moore County, but I specifically love Pinehurst, so this is an even better opportunity to showcase what makes Pinehurst great and to foster an appreciation for that.
Thank you very much, Cara. Other comments, questions from council members? Jeff?
You stated that you had a lot of ideas.
Yes.
Hit me up with your best one so far.
Oh, gosh, I feel like that's subjective. One of them, so as an historic homeowner, I talked kind of extensively about this. When we moved in, we moved into a recently renovated house, and I am slowly learning the process for making changes to our property, and it's kind of just hearsay, you know, here and there someone will say, by the way, you have to get that approved, or, you know, if you wanted to put something in your backyard or front yard, or if you wanted to put a fence up, you would have to, you know, go before the board, and I don't know who to call, I don't know how to set that up. And I don't think that my situation is unique. I think there's a lot of people who want to do the right thing and maintain their historic homes, but they just don't know, you know, I think a lot of people who've been here for a while take for granted the fact that they know who to contact if they want to make those changes. So one of the things that I would love to do is just kind of work with realtors in the area and put together a checklist of if you have an historic home or a home that's about to be historic, I guess. These are, you know, the contact numbers, and maybe these are qualified tradesmen who know how to work on, you know, historic windows or doors, and this is the process, you know, checklist process of how to go about doing that, just to make sure that we do it the right way and in a, again, proactive way and not a penal way, I guess. We don't want to punish people. It's better to just have a good relationship with them from the start.
Thank you. Any other questions, Lydia?
I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve, and if you can drag 10 more young people along with you, that would be terrific.
Agreed. Pat, anything?
Yeah, just, congratulations, because you're probably going to be confirmed shortly, but I wanted to take this opportunity to just sort of touch on this subject I've touched on occasionally before, and that is about the transparency involved with our advisory committees and all of them, not just yours. That we, the village of Pinehurst, still need to put on our website the members of all our advisory committees, because right now, if you go to the website and click on Members, comes a form that you have to declare you're not a robot, and I guess then ask a question. I have not gone past that, because I didn't want to reveal whether I was a robot or not. So my goal is to try to make sure that we eventually put all the members' names up there so that our fellow citizens can know who's going to be there, and along with the term of their appointment, again, the type of information that our citizens should have, be able to acquire at their fingertips. I also think that it'd be helpful, I read this small snapshot about you, which I thought was very precise, and it was sort of on point, too, about your background, but I think it'd be useful if all our advisory committee members had a small snapshot of themselves. But I think it'd be useful if all our advisory committee members had a small snapshot of themselves on the website. And that's very much common in other communities. The members are listed, and there's a little identification. And finally, I don't know if you know, but I didn't know until a few weeks ago, that members of our advisory committees, all of them, are subject to the Public Records Act. That means communications they make on their own personal computers with either their fellow committee members or citizens that deal with the topics at hand are subject to citizens requesting copies of that material. That's on your handheld devices, on your personal computers and whatnot. I don't believe most of our residents know that. I did not know that until a few weeks ago. I mean, I know as a village council member, I am subject to that, but I never thought about it. Someone who's working on their own time, not paid by the village, and is participating is also subject to that. So I'm making that statement, the one you probably know about that, but I'm making that statement so that others who are on advisory committees become familiar with that, because that's just the law. And we need to comply with the law. So I know we discussed this before about in the future that advisory committee members of any committee be alerted to that fact ahead of time so that they're not shocked to learn about it at the end of the process. So, thank you.
Other questions from council members? Jane?
Thank you. Thank you so much for volunteering. It's great, and it's a busy commission with a lot of work to do. And again, you probably already know this, but also for the benefit of everyone who's here, we do have a section, quite a large section of the village, which is designated an historic overlay district. And in that district, a whole set of standards as to the appearance of the buildings that are there applies. And it's a very detailed set of standards. And people come before the Historic Preservation Commission to see whether their plan is in line with the standards. The commission also works very hard to keep up to date with the standards and to make sure that they're doing the job they're meant to do. And of course, as always happens with regulations, you have an idea in your mind of what ideally you'd like to do, and then it comes down to the regulations, and the regulations don't necessarily meet the dream. But that's what you have to work with, and that's what you have to live with. So this particular board slash committee is where a lot of rubber meets the road. It's very hardworking. And I do admire you for volunteering to work with them, and I look forward to you enjoying working with them. It's a great, great group who are on it. They have a big job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Any other questions from council? Cara, any questions you'd like to address back to us?
I guess if anybody has any priorities other than the general keeping Pinehurst beautiful, is there anything that has come up in meetings historically, no pun intended, that you'd like us to, or like me, maybe to focus on?
Well, just picking up from the other comments that have been made, the Historic Preservation Commission, which if we vote in a minute in favor, you will be a part of, is that group that is established to maintain the character, the physical character of the historic district in Pinehurst. And so you now are about to be, I think, in charge and working with the group that has that responsibility. So we and those attending this meeting tonight and listening to us look to you and your guidance in the future in working with the standards and making sure that everything's being adhered to. So we welcome that. Having said that, and with no other questions, I believe we have a motion which would appoint Cara Mathis to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 22-09, appointing Cara Mathis to the Historic Preservation Commission for a two-year term, effective June 1, 2022, and expiring on May 31, 2024.
That's a motion by Patrick Pizzella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Cara, welcome.
Thank you.
On June the 1st, and thank you very much for your time today. Let's move to agenda item number seven. Jeff, do you want to have Jeff Batten take this, I think?
Yeah, and while Jeff's on his way up. Say again?
Excuse me?
Six, yeah, right.
I'm sorry, it's item number six, yes.
So some background on this. Every year, we commission a study of the traffic on, at all of the, well, the majority of the intersections on the state highways that traverse the Village of Pinehurst. And we don't do them all every year. We do half of them one year and then half the next year. And so it's time to renew that contract, and Jeff has a proposal for you to approve a qualifications-based selection exemption for CMS engineering. Who has done this work for us in the past to do it for us again?
That's correct. As Jeff said, we bring this forward every year because CMS engineering has been our preferred traffic engineering firm to study these intersections, as Jeff indicated. And so we're back before you at this point in time, because general statutes in North Carolina say that engineers, architects, surveyors have to be selected based on qualifications unless we seek this exemption from council. And so tonight, that's what we are asking, is if council would consider exempting this particular process from the qualification-based selection process so that we may engage this specific engineering firm who has been doing this work since 2005 for the village and has all of the background data to perform all the analysis associated with how the intersection's level of services have changed basically every other year going back to 2005. As Jeff indicated, there's a series of intersections we do one year. There's another series of intersections we do the next year, and then we return. So this is an every-other-year process for this particular group. Now, listed in the memorandum that we sent out, the intersections that are for this year, which are pretty much along Highway 211, NC 2, and Morganton Road. And so that we can get, again, an understanding of how those intersections are maybe changing compared to past history. And then utilizing, hopefully, that data to engage with DOT for potential modifications as necessary or as needed, could be to light cycles, things of that nature. Ultimately, with some of the intersections along Highway 5, which is the next group of intersections, that type of data and the ability to prove lowering of level of service at each intersection or along the corridor is further data, if you will, for DOT to take into consideration for potential changes or modifications to the highway system and network around us as well as perhaps on NC 5. But this time, we are focusing on NC 211, and if you would be in agreement to provide the QBS exemption, then we could enter into an agreement with CMS to perform the intersection studies this year.
When I looked at the list of intersections, I said, wow. This is going to be an important study because of the interface there with Highway 211 and other places there, Jeff, several locations along there. So this looks like a really important set of circumstances this year. Are there questions from the council members for Mr. Batten?
Yes, I got a couple.
Pat?
Who is CMS?
CMS Engineering is out of Morrisville. They're a traffic engineering study firm. The original, CMS really stood for Carl Simmons, who's the founder of that firm. He has since retired, and the firm has continued on under a leadership and ownership of a different person now, Patty Hildreth.
And what has been the outcome of all these studies they've done for the last dozen years?
Yeah.
What do we do with them?
What happens? Yeah, that's a great question. I think on a couple of occasions, we've actually engaged them to do some additional evaluation and study, and in particularly some design, draft designs for some changes along Highway 5, based on some of the intersection issues that we see. And so we've used them in addition to gathering the counts and the data. We've used them also to do some design types of opportunities for DOT and the council to consider for potential adjustments to Highway 5 to manage traffic there. But the primary thing that the intersection studies come into play for us is the ability to understand and see the trends of how our intersections maybe are improving or getting worse, depending on other actions that are taking place around us within and by DOT. It does give us the ability to prove, if you will, that some of our intersections are seeing a decrease in levels of service. And when we can begin to see that occurring, then we can go to DOT on the front end and say, look, this is a trend that's coming. We're going to see this trend continuing. We need to now get ahead of some traffic planning and traffic studying for any particular intersections that we're noting these kinds of issues with. DOT, of course, moves at a very slow pace by design and has to, you know, obviously plan years, multiple years out. And so I think our ability to bring to the table data for DOT to consider sooner rather than later, I think has got value to us from that standpoint.
So is this a one-year renewal or?
Yeah, we do this just on an annual basis, and it's always, obviously, A, subject to being in the budget and being approved, and then we've always just come to council every year with a QBS request.
Given that it's been the same firm for 17 years, is it wise that, knowing we have a year's lead time, to think about bidding this out next year? Not precluding CMS from winning, but?
Yeah. It's a fair question. I think our preference primarily has been, A, this is what they do.
Right.
They're experts in this field, and B, the fact that they do maintain all of the historical data. Now, we do have historical data in our possession.
Right.
Don't get me wrong. But it has just been a preferred vendor from that standpoint. But is it fair to say, could it be bid out? Absolutely.
Well, I'd like to encourage that we look at that.
But again, when you say, yeah, but when you say bid out, again, recognize that we cannot bid this project out. We have to select based on qualifications.
I understand.
And then negotiate a price.
Now, I was using bid in shorthand of qualifications.
There's a couple of other companies or engineering firms out there that would be qualified to do this work.
When was the last time they looked at 211 and Rattlesnake Trail? Was that two years ago or four years? Do you know?
That was done in 2018 because we skipped 2020 because of the COVID impacts on traffic flow. We just felt like that data was going to be so skewed that with people working from home and all that stuff, we elected not to pursue.
Remind me, was that before the community center was built or after?
That would be right before, because the community center opened up just about the time COVID kind of.
I particularly am interested in that intersection, because I personally think there's a need for a right-hand turn lane at Rattlesnake Trail.
Yeah, we would have, and that's a good point, we would have the data before the community center opening, and we would have now data right afterwards. And so, yeah, we would be able to.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic of kids and parents with strollers and whatnot with the field and the community center and the elementary school across the street.
Very valid point you make.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Jeff Batten? Lydia?
I have one question. Thank you for your question about the usefulness of this. But as we train one of our new planning people into the traffic area, I would anticipate that this information is going to be valid, that we could get even further use with this data if we've got somebody who's focused on transportation. Is that a valid assumption?
That is very valid, and I can actually point to the fact that we moved the dollars for this budget item from our engineering, public services side over to planning with the anticipation that the planner with transportation experience would have better ability to utilize this data and information than we are on the public services side in reality. And so we actually have shifted and placed the funds in their budget for them to actually manage going forward. And in fact, these dollars this year are in the planning budget for that reason, because of exactly what you point out.
Some more bang for this buck.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I noticed the cost this year is less than what we had paid previously.
Reduced than the previous, yes.
Even though the work is carrying on.
Yeah, and that's technology-based. It's the, they use camera systems, and that downloads into a software system that calculates all the different motor vehicle movements that are occurring, right turns, left turns, all the different directions. So we have, all the data comes in. I mean, we know how many cars are turning right at a particular intersection, how many are going left, how many are going straight forward. What's the distance or the time that your average time that the delay is for each car? And what that actual level of service translates into in terms of intersection. So all intersections are rated between A and E, E being, A and F, excuse me, F being obviously a failure, A being the top of the line. And there's a timeframe assigned to each one. As the timeframe gets longer, the lower the grade becomes. We have, this data gives us, you know, all of that kind of very detailed information about how an intersection truly functions and whether a right turn lane is necessary or needed, or a left turn, or whatever the case may be.
Jeff, remind me, when we received this report?
We should receive this one by the end of June.
End of June, so coming up right away.
This June 30th, yes.
Good, so we'd have some to look at.
Once the cameras get deployed and they're out there during, they do a week deployment. And once that information is downloaded in the software, then it's a matter of them kicking out the numbers and then the analyzation of the numbers. Once they have the data in hand, the data gathering actually is the quick part, is the analytical portion thereafter that takes a little more time.
Thank you. Other questions?
That'd be great to get a briefing that early. I did not anticipate you. That's why I switched June. Thank you.
Any other questions? I believe we have a resolution on this as well.
Yes, sir.
Item number six.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2210, granting a qualification-based selection QBS exemption in order to allow staff to contract directly with CMS engineering to conduct traffic studies at specific intersections within the Village of Pinehurst.
That's a motion by Pat Pizzella. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, thank you very much. We'll go on with that work.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's move to item number seven then. A RFQ for library and archives design services. Jeff and Doug Wilberston will come forward.
Thank you, John. It's time for us to begin to move forward, I think, with design for the expansion of the library and archives. And so Doug has prepared a draft RFQ to start that process. Go ahead, Doug.
And just let me ask a question as you're beginning, Doug. Can the folks here in Village Hall hear all the comments so far pretty well tonight? Sounds good. Doug, proceed. Looks good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we prepared an RFQ, and this is a request for qualifications, similar to what Jeff was talking about earlier. When we put this out, we get proposals back, and there's not any price related to it. And then we grade them on the quality of their submittal, and from there, we negotiate with the highest rated proposer to negotiate the best price we can with them. But we are looking forward, now that we have the library as part of the village, we are excited to move forward with the next steps. And that includes, well, the first step is to get an architect on board to help us design an expanded library and archive. So you've all had a chance to look at the RFQ, so I won't go through it by detail unless you'd like me to. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I know council members made several edits and amendments specifically related to the historic Village of Pinehurst. I hope Cara is listening on that. And I think those are very well received, so thank you to all of those of you who did that. So are there questions of Doug further than on the summary memo and on the RFQ? Jane, did you have some? Jane?
Yeah. On page 10, it's Section 5, the evaluation process, 5.1A evaluation. It's a list of the items that we're going to be evaluating their submittal against. And the second one is, does the firm have experience designing libraries, which is great. Should we add in somewhere, or maybe I missed it? Do they have experience with the renovation of historic buildings? Should we put that into that list, too? Should we put that into that list too?
Yeah, so...
Put it elsewhere in the...
Yeah. So you're saying in Section 5.1, evaluation, Part A?
Yes.
Yep. We can certainly add that in. I think it's appropriate. We added it other places as well.
And we don't have any cost estimate at this point of what we're talking about?
We, there's not a firm one. And when they did the library needs assessment a few years ago, I think there was a ballpark number in it. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Are we precluded from discussing that publicly ahead of time? I'm going back to my government, federal government experience about discussing price publicly before we get the responses to RFQs, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is there's a budget number in this year's budget that it's public knowledge. So I think it's $400,000, is that right, Brooke?
Is that just a placeholder?
That's a placeholder. I mean, we're going to have to negotiate a price with somebody then, but...
Thank you.
Good point, though, Pat. Yep. Jane, was that, those are your questions? Jeff Morgan, any questions on this? Lydia?
A comment and question. Comment, thank you. In your memo, when you've got your task, I really appreciate you listed the task, you listed the responsible party, you listed the deadline, so that was useful. Also, over in the RFQ on page five, I guess this is my old page five, you say, according to the Village of Pinehurst Community Survey, 93% of village residents indicated the village is either an excellent or good place to live, 22% higher than the national average. Those sort of speak for themselves. But I know we use benchmarks a lot. Do we have benchmark data on how this 93% compares to benchmark communities? I'm just curious. I'm just wondering if we have benchmark data rather than just higher than the national, 22% higher than the national average.
Lydia, what section was that? Three points?
Um, it's section, we move things around, it's in the introduction.
It's now Section 1.2, the background.
Okay. 1.2.
So we do have numbers like that. I do not know them off the top of my head, but...
But we do have benchmarks. I was just curious. Okay. I might like to get it later, but that stood out.
Matt's sitting in the back, so I'm sure he's taken notes and he will provide that to you soon.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Pat, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. For the benefit of those listening, and actually somewhat my benefit because I do not read every line, what are the standards that we're asking for that we're going to judge these proposals that come into us? I mean, we know we're not judging price right now, so what?
Right. So Section 5 is the evaluation process. So we are going to evaluate them on the reputation, quality and experience of the firm, the proposed project team, and their overall approach and methodology for the project.
So we would be reviewing resumes?
Yes, we would.
Okay. Second, we'll, have we decided and can we limit the people who can apply or submit RFQs to companies in the state of North Carolina?
I don't believe we can limit it, but as we evaluate them, we can consider that.
Take into account.
Yeah.
Is there a, when we evaluate them, is there a point system? Again, I'm going back to how I did in the federal government. So you were, the evaluators award points based on what we see in their submission?
Correct, yeah.
Typically, that's the way we have done that, but it's not spelled out in this document.
It's not in this document?
Right.
Okay. All right, well, I'm very interested in the, in the end of having some local, meaning the state of North Carolina, really help us in this area. And the only other thing I had is I noticed, actually, when I finally caught up to the end of the submission, it looks like when you go through the financial forecasts and all, you're not planning debt financing. You just sort of list it as a possibility. So is that, did I read that right when I went from one document to the other?
You're right. We'll let Jeff talk about that in a couple of minutes.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
The plan is to not use debt service, debt borrowing for this.
Thank you. That's what I thought. All right.
Well, I think, yeah, as and when the time comes, I think we'll look at all the, all the financial options that are available to the village and council will make the best decision at that point and whatever that is it will be. But there's some thoughts as to what we would like to do at this point. And again, the RFQ is, you know, I think, very detailed. And we'll be having to make some decisions when the report comes back about how far we can go and what are the demands for services and how that's going to fit into whatever design they have. So it's going to be quite a comprehensive report. Jeff, thank you very much. And Doug, anything else?
May I ask one more question? Well, we use the same process we use with the consultant for the small area plans where RFQ, where the quotes came in and you guys went through them and then you selected some of the best of the best and those came to council and we spent considerable, okay, so same approach.
Unless you give us other direction, yeah.
Well, I think the question was, we'll be able to evaluate the final firms is the idea, right? Yeah. We certainly want a council to do that. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I believe we have a motion on this item as well.
I move to approve the issuance of requests for qualifications for library and archives design services as presented.
That's motion by Lydia Boss.
Second.
Second by Pat Bazela. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Doug, thanks very much. Look forward to your work. And thank you for the timeline in your head in there, showing us where we're headed. Move on then to item number eight, which is a presentation on the fiscal year 2023 budget and strategic operating plan. The village manager will make a fairly comprehensive report on this tonight. And we heard some preliminary discussion of it in the last meeting, I believe. However, the council will be meeting potentially two times next week, Monday, the 16th, and potentially Wednesday, the 18th, to review the budget in detail with staff. It's a special meeting dedicated strictly to the budget or other items that might come up, but it's, we're in that process now.
I'm going to apologize in advance. I don't have the actual PowerPoint version of this, so I'm going to have to present this to you scrolling through a PDF.
Jeff, on the microphone.
Nobody can hear me? Is that better?
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, as I was saying, I'm going to apologize in advance. I didn't bring a PowerPoint version of this, so I'm going to present it scrolling through a PDF. That'll be a little bit clunky, but all the same information is going to be available to you, so. Okay, so we're at the time, we're nearing the end of this process. And as I always say, this is a budget development and five-year plan development is an annual process. And it literally takes us almost a year to complete it, you know, starting with a collection of, you know, data, community surveys, other information throughout the summer, and then building toward the strategic retreat in the December timeframe where you all give us strategic direction that we go back as a staff and try to figure out how to make it all work in a, in a one-year budget and a five-year plan. And so what we, what we have for you is the draft 2023 strategic operating plan. This is, as I said, this is a five-year plan. This is available to the public as well. And probably would be helpful for me to point out that there's a statutory obligation for me to present the budget to you every year. And this serves that purpose, but it's much, much more, as I said, because this is, this is more than just a one-year budget, it's a five-year plan. So there's a lot of information here for you that we're going to cover and I, and I hope that I can do it in a way that's easy for you to digest. Okay, so things we're going to cover, we're going to talk about your strategic direction that we're going to, I'm going to give you kind of an overview or an orientation to the strategic operating plan, this document. Then we're going to go over some details in the 2023 budget. This is not, there we go. And then we're going to cover the five-year plan, financial forecast, and then talk about what's next after tonight. Yeah, this is, all right, your strategic direction. This is discussed in the SOP under the strategic priorities section, which is pages 37 to 68. And it indicates your strategic, our strategic planning process, how we go through the one-year process that I just described. There's a description of the 2023's balanced scorecard with your areas of focus that you selected during the strategic retreat. There's a discussion of our initiative action plans to address the strategic goals and objectives and your areas of focus in some regards. We talk about the key process evaluations that are planned in this five-year plan. And there's also a discussion about the historic and projected performance given the resources allocated in this five-year plan. I mentioned the areas of focus. These are the three that you selected back in December, managing development to protect village character, supporting the business community, and providing a safe and effective multimodal transportation system. And there are a lot of factors that went into that. We looked at some gap analysis with regard to, you know, performance versus comparative communities and goals. We looked at strategic opportunities and strategic challenges and tried to map out where all, where the greatest amount of commonalities were across those various inputs. And that's, that's what led us to these three areas of focus that you selected. Key components of our strategic operating plan, and you don't have to do this, but I might suggest you might want to flip through the plan with me here, but this is just to serve as an orientation to how the, this document is laid out. On page one, it's the second tab, is budget in brief. And then you can move on, and our public can move on to the budget message, which is one tab behind that. That's page five. Then there's a guide to how to use the strategic operating plan. And that starts on page 27. There's a tab called strategic priorities. And that's on page 37. Then there's a very lengthy section that begins on page 69, which describes all the things general fund-related. As you all know, the general fund drives just about everything that we do in the village. And so there's a lot of information there and we're going to be covering that in more detail later on, obviously. And then there's the capital project fund tab, which begins at page 139. Something that's different this year, we have the special revenue fund and that's specifically associated with the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we are, we are receiving, about $5.3 million. And the idea is that we have to hold that money in a special project, in a special revenue fund until we can appropriately move it, appropriately move it over into the general fund for the expenditures that are programmed. Then the next tab behind that you'll see is the five-year financial forecast on page 143. And then you can see our, our capital improvement plan. Again, this is another five-year plan, which is a tab behind that. Okay. Any questions on the layout? All right, thanks. Moving on to the budget. All right, the 2023 budget is looking at about 21, 27.1 million dollars. That's 6% above the amended general fund budget that we arrived at as of December 31st, when we did that reanalysis at that time for this year. The property tax rate for 2023 that we're recommending is 31 cents. That's a reduction of one-half cent from what it is currently. And it's a reduction of one full penny, one full cent compared to what we were projecting at this time last year for this coming year. This is something different. This year, we, the budget includes $0 of appropriated fund balance. We typically rely on appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. And it just takes a little bit of explanation for folks to understand. That doesn't mean that we, when all things are said and done at the end of year, we anticipate using fund balance typically. But what happens year in and year out, just whatever year, is, you know, revenues come in slightly higher than we project, expenses come in slightly lower. And at the end of the year, typically, we'll look back and instead of using fund balance, we accrue a little bit of fund balance. That's, there are some give and takes on that. Sometimes we have major projects, particularly cap, big capital things going on in a given year, it might turn out a little bit different. But for this year, we have zero year, $0 of appropriated fund balance built into the budget. And that is specifically because of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So the decrement there or that we would, the need that we otherwise would have had for appropriating fund balance acts as a throttle or on, or a governor, if you will, on how much of the American Rescue Plan funds that we can incorporate into this year's budget. Because we can't, we can't go over that. So as I mentioned before, we've got $5.3 million roughly of American Rescue Plan Act funds available. We can incorporate 4.3 million of that in this budget. And then the rest of it is currently planned for incorporation in the following year. And we'll see how we progress through this year. There's probably a pretty good chance that by the end of the year, we may be able to incorporate it all into this year's operations. But we can't forecast that at this time. We expect an ending fund balance of 51, 54.9% of expenditures. That's above your floor of 30% and it's very much by design. We have long recognized that given the significant capital projects that are on our horizon, we were going to need to build our fund balance up to, to put ourselves in a position to deal with those challenges. And as, when you see the five-year forecast later on, you'll see that we, by the end of the five-year plan, we're right down there, down there near that 30% floor that, that you have set in your policy. This plan includes five initiative action plans that will be occurring at least partially during 2023 at a cost of $1.5 million roughly. And you can see them listed there. We'll be updating the Pinehurst development ordinance. We'll be completing the small area plans for Village Place and Rattlesnake Trail corridor and the Pinehurst South Highway Five commercial area. We'll be working on expanding and renovating the Gilding Tough Library, Library and Archives design, design work. We just talked about that. As part of that process, there was also another million dollars that's been allocated in this budget for a potential head start on that that we have been talking about. We may or may not be expending those funds this year based on some things we've learned in the last couple of weeks, but, so that's, that's why you see that here in the 2023 budget. We have plans to retrofit current athletic fields with synthetic turf. And one of those fields is programmed for, for the 23 budget. And that would be the large baseball field at Cannon Park. And the idea there is that over the long haul, you can operate more efficiently, more with synthetic turf than you can with natural turf. You know, so it's a larger upfront expense, but in terms of the maintenance costs associated with natural turf and when, also when you factor in the ability to significantly increase the play on any given field in the long run, it's a, we expect it to be a money saver. And then relocation of the public services complex. There is money in this year's budget for potential land acquisition that would facilitate that. Whether or not we get to that is, you know, it's hard to tell at this point, but we want to have the money budgeted in the, in this year's budget in case the opportunity presents itself. We'll treat this just like we did a couple of years ago when we forecasted the need for the third fire station. We, you know, we forecasted, we included money for that land acquisition in a year. I don't recall what year it was. We didn't use it that year. We rolled it forward and we essentially, and we eventually did spend it, I think, in the second year that we budgeted it, but we, we had to look for the right opportunity. But in order to take advantage of that opportunity, we had to have the money, had to have the money available and budgeted. So that's the approach we're taking here on the public services complex as well.
Mr. May, before we move on, can I ask questions?
Yeah.
Couple, one, first of all, I want to commend the staff for the, the work they did to reduce the property tax rate, not just eliminate the increase. That's, you beat expectations, at least from one member of the council. But, so I really appreciate that because I know that takes work to analyze and project and so forth. Secondly... Secondly, on the $27.1 million budget, it says 6% above the amended general fund budget as of. So that was 6% at mid-year, when you amended it, right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. What, what is it versus the original budget? I mean, is it more or less? I'm, I'm.
The original budget would have been bigger.
It would have been, oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, yeah. So there's two different things going on there. Like I said, budget to actual variance.
Yes.
We typically take in more revenue, and we expend fewer dollars. Now, that did happen last year. And so you would think that that would result in the amended budget at mid-year being less. But the other thing that happens is that every year, at the end of year, we do a roll forward of things that were budgeted in previous year that gets slid over after the budget is adopted, adopted for the next year, into that subsequent year's budget.
Okay.
The, the net of those two things result in.
Ending.
These, the, the adopted budget last year being smaller than the mid-year budget was.
Okay. Okay. We'll have, obviously, we can visit these IAPs later on and get a little more detail, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine. Keep going.
Thank you, Pat. So a little bit on revenues. I guess I should start just with, with the assumptions here on the left. Incorporated into this budget are several key assumptions. One is that we've, we've assumed 1.2, 1.24% growth in real property tax, in the real crop property tax base over our prior year construction levels, or based on prior, prior year construction levels. And we assume 150 new homes, and, and that's pretty much on track for what we're seeing in, in the market right now. We are assuming an 18.1% increase in sales tax receipts over FY, over the, the original FY '22 budget. Of course, that's been a, we've been kind of chasing that over the last couple of years. There's some things that have been going on. You know, there was the incorporation of the online sales tax a couple of years ago, and we didn't really know, go, and we didn't really know how to, how that was going to impact us. And we, we budgeted very conservatively on that. Turns out the impact was much, much greater, I think, than, than all of us initially anticipated. And then right on the heels of that, we had the COVID impact. And, you know, because of that, we budgeted conservatively again. And then things came in much stronger, and, and, you know. So that's why you're seeing some of these big increases in sales tax projections. Some of that's already water under the bridge. But based on what the, the state is telling us right now in terms of the projections for this coming year, we feel pretty firm that 18.1 is a pretty good number when compared to what we budgeted last year, which was artificially low, I think.
So the general, the 2023, it does not factor in the property evaluations that are going to be taking place?
You're talking about revaluation.
Re-evaluation, I'm sorry.
That won't hit us until the, at least the 2024 budget.
24, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. The increase in sales tax receipts, do we get a breakdown? I know at one point we attributed it to the online sales because of COVID. But is that an assumption, or do we get any, do we get any data from the state about the source of the sales tax revenues?
I don't think we get an actual breakdown, Brooke, no. I, I think it was mostly based on assumption, but there was some anecdotal evidence that the state was using on that, that, I don't recall what it was, but, yeah.
The percentage of revenues that are ad valorem property taxes is now under 50%. And I'm sure that's a lot to do with the American Rescue Plan money coming in and skewing it. Because wasn't it always more than 50% in the past?
Yeah.
I think it was.
Your problem, I would guess that.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I haven't gone back and done that, that comparison. This is an oddball year.
It's an oddball year. But, but what's your sense of the proportion between, if you set aside the American Rescue Plan funds, the proportion between the ad valorem taxes and the, sales taxes isn't the right word, but, but the yellows.
Local option sales tax is becoming a bigger driver for us.
Are ad valorem taxes holding their own? And I ask that because the sales taxes and things that we get back from the state are a lot more volatile over time than the, than the property taxes.
That's, that's a true statement. I think that, I think it's fair to observe that when you ask whether or not property taxes are holding, holding their own. Yes, they're holding their own, but because sales taxes, local option sales taxes are growing much faster, the proportion of our overall revenues that's derived from ad valorem taxes is lower. Fair assessment, Brooke?
Thank you.
Okay, so we've already, I already, I guess, started talking about the pie chart. As is always the case, the, the biggest contributor has, has been our property taxes. Of course, there's, the big piece of that is the, is the ad valorem taxes on our homes and buildings and, and things like that in the village. There's a smaller piece in there, that's the motor vehicle tax. The biggest, then the, the second biggest piece of the pie you see there is the intergovernmental revenues. And of course, the biggest piece of that is the local option sales tax. If you want a more detailed breakout of that, you can find it on pages 83 and 85 in the strategic operating plan, several components of intergovernmental revenues. But by far, the biggest component is the local option sales tax. And then what's really, you know, significantly different this year is the other financing sources there, listed and shown in gray. And most, and that, that is, actually, this year, it's exclusively the ARP funds. Sometimes there's some capital project fund transfer that, that's indicated there, but we don't have that going on this year. So all of that 16% is ARP funds for this year, which skews the whole rest of the pie, obviously. All right. Then we've got a couple of different ways to look at our expenditures. This is the first one. And you can see, as, as is always the case, slightly over half of our operating, or of our total expenditures are, are dedicated to salaries and benefits. And then just under a third, and this is typical, what you see here is typical of, I think, every year, is allocated to other operating expenses. And then this year, we have 19% allocated to capital. Under salaries and benefits, there's, you see some more information there on the left-hand side, side of the slide. This incorporates an average annual merit pay increase of 2%. And this is based on your adopted policy, plus a cost of living adjustment of 4.7%. Now, that, I've talked about this in the past. That's based on CPI. And what we do is we, you know, starting in January every year, we do, we do a year-over-year comparison. January versus January, February versus February, March, you know, all the way out to December. And then we take those 12 numbers, we average them all. And that's a recommended way to do that. It's kind of a best practice that we've, we've latched on to, because it kind of, it, it evens out the, the large swings in CPI. And what, and the result of that process for this past year, that calculation of this, this past year is 4.7%. That's a big number. It's good news that we can absorb it and still drop the, drop the, the property tax rate. But I think, you know, so far, what we're seeing is that it's kind of been roughly proportionate to the change, to the, to the growth in the economy and sales tax revenue and everything else. And so we didn't quite know how this was going to factor out this year. We've been, had been monitoring the sales tax revenue for, or, I'm sorry, the, the CPI for, you know, month over month, and, and looking at ourselves, at each other, and scratching our head, scratching our heads about how this was going to impact this budget, whether or not we might have to do something different. But turns out it worked out fine, so.
Jeff, is operating contain all the contractual services we have?
Yes, it does, yeah. We have two full-time, two new full-time equivalents in this year's budget. That's two new police patrol officers. And another thing to note is that we will, this budget anticipates us continuing to pay 100% of our employee health and dental insurance policy costs. And it also factors in an expectation of a 10% increase when we renegotiate in the November, December timeframe next, next winter. All right, any questions on that? All right, another way to look at our expenditures is by function. And as, as is always the case, public safety is, is, is the, is the, is the largest component of, component of our, of our expenditures, 33% this year. And again, that's very similar to, to past years. And then, you know, again, very similar to past years, cultural and recreational programs come in second. A little bit larger this year because of the incorporation of library and archive services, but not, not drastically different. And then transportation, you see there coming in about 19%. Just to put that finer point on that, you're talking about road resurfacing and patching and repairs to roadways and, and other minor transportation-related things that we, we pay for. And then three significantly smaller components of the pie. Environmental protection, you know, that's your solid waste and stormwater and things like that. And then economic development and general government, which is your, you know, our admin functions, our finance functions, our, our human resources functions. And then parts of, for example, the IT staff and effort that are not directly allocated to the requirements of the other, other departments in the, in the village.
If we're buying trucks and cars and all, does that fall in the general government or transportation?
Trucks and cars won't be in the, it's under the, well, it is. It's under capital, but it is part of our, yeah, it is part of our expenditure plan here. And it would, trucks, for example, a police car would be under public safety.
It, that, it would fall, it falls in that category rather than the, okay.
Yeah.
Philly roads and the other maintenance, okay. Thank you.
We're showing here some of the more significant capital that's in this budget. As I mentioned before, there's the synthetic turf installation project at one of our two Cannon Park fields. There's that million dollars I mentioned for the Gilding Memorial Library and Tufts Archives initial improvements. We don't have specific plans to, to use that yet. We have that placeholder in the budget in case an opportunity winds up arising. If, if we don't use it, we would anticipate rolling that forward into the capital project fund for the library expansion, library and archives expansion in the future. Pedestrian facilities and other, this, you'll see this later on. But it's, we typically, we have typically forecasted a need for about $400,000 a year. And this year is no different. And as Jane or Lydia mentioned earlier, Lydia mentioned earlier, our bicycle pedestrian folks are working to prioritize that effort for this budget, budget year as well. Stormwater drainage projects, about, about $350,000, $55,000 allocated for this year. That's up slightly from last year. I mentioned before that we'll, we have in this budget an earmark of $350,000 to acquire a currently unidentified piece of land to move the public services complex so that we can accommodate the, the eventual redevelopment of Village Place in accordance with the small area plan that we're working on right now. We have one solid waste truck in this plan, or this budget for $245,000. You'll, you know, year-over-year, you'll routinely see about, you know, one of those every, every couple of years. It's a pretty big bill to pay. But it's a necessity. They get, they get a, you know, they get a lot of use every, well, at least four days of the week, all day, every week of the year. And they're pretty technical pieces of equipment. $200,000 allocated for streetscape improvements in, in and around the Village Place area. And although we don't have specific plans for that yet, you know, I, I think the concept is it would be either spent extending work on McCaskill Road or on Rattlesnake Trail. And we'll be coming back to you later on with a recommendation on that.
Jeff, I think I asked for this clarification once upon a time. Just because the number is here doesn't mean we're going to do it. But if we don't budget for something, we can't do it unless we do a budget amendment.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Not in this fiscal year.
Well, for example.
Fiscal year.
In FY 2023.
Right.
If it's not listed there, we need a budget amendment if we plan to do it. But if we're going to do it further out, we don't need to have it in this fiscal year.
And we may budget, we may.
Sure that we try to incorporate all of our expected expenses in the budget so that we, you know, we're not, we don't have any surprises down the road and have to.
Right.
And if we get like eight months into the year, and we haven't done one of these, and we decide we are, but we don't spend the money in this fiscal year, we just roll these dollars forward.
If we still intended to, to complete those projects, that's what we do, yes.
Let me, just a couple of questions. And perhaps the answer in many of these is, we'll have a little more detailed briefing later on. On the synthetic turf installation, do we have sort of an outline of a plan? And what do we do? How long does it take to turn over a field? So you put turf in it? And what's the history? And do we have the specific type of turf we're planning? Is that somewhere, and we can get briefed on it at a right time? I don't, I don't need a detail right now. I'm just, I understand the topic, I understand the cost. I'm trying to understand the process.
I think pursuant to that question, what we will, what we will do before we, before we pursue the project is bring the details back to you and support moving forward on that expenditure.
I assume at that price tag, we'd be going out for bids to various competitors to install this? This looks like a nice prize. Okay. Second item, on the Memorial Library and initial improvements, are we going to sort of look at that after we award the contract? Or are we going to, I mean, we just okayed the RFQ, and that's the beginning of that process. I'm wondering how we, do we, you know, put the cart before the horse? Or what are we doing here? Do you have some insights or?
Yeah. You know, we've had some, recently, we've had some discussions that you may recall about an opportunity that.
Oh, yes.
That million, million dollars was tied to that potential opportunity.
Gotcha, okay.
So.
And the.
Realistic anymore, I don't know.
That's fair enough, thank you. And the last thing, on the public services complex relocation, we may or may not need to acquire land. We know we want, we're going to have to vacate that land so we can become a player in this. But that's an issue as to what we decide.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the five-year financial forecast. This cover, is covered in pages 143 to 149 in the, in the plan. As we always say, you know, when we're trying to develop this plan that puts all the puzzle pieces together that you identified in the strategic retreat, what we're looking at over that five-year horizon is, you know, to meet three primary targets, you will, if you will, with regard to some of these metrics. Fund balance, operating margins, and debt service ratios. Now, debt service ratios has never really been a historical problem for us because, well, right now, we're at zero debt. And as you can see later on, even for the library and for, and for the potential carriage house, now we're not forecasting the need to issue debt. So, but what, what you will see in the five-year financial forecast, year-over-year, every time we show it to you, you're going to, you're going to see the, the fund balance every year that's projected, and you're going to see our operating margins. And when we, when we're pulling this plan together, we're tinkering with things, we're moving things back and forth between years. And, you know, of course, the only, the big lever you can pull is property taxes. We don't want to pull that one. And, and, you know, it's fortunate that we were able to actually reduce that this year. And even in that regard, what we did was, we said, hey, we got, you know, these numbers are, are higher than they need to be. So how low can we? are higher than they need to be, so how low can we take the property tax rate and still meet these parameters that we're looking for? And so you'll see that on the forecast. This five-year plan incorporates the inclusion of an additional two and a half full-time equivalents over and above the two police officers that I talked about before that are in the 23 proposed budget. It also incorporates all of our five-year capital improvement plans and the associated and anticipated operating expenses that might be tied to some of those capital improvements. There are some assumptions that are tied into this based on our historical performance, 1% annual growth in real and personal tax base, a little over 3.5% increase in average annual salaries and benefits, and a 2.5% inflation rate. Now, I think it's fair to say, what's going on with that? I mean, we're, we just came through a year where inflation, you know, we, you know, the way we calculated was 4.7%. If you look at it year over year, you know, from, you know, I guess March or April to the previous, you know, March or April, and it was closer to 7 or 8%, why are we saying 2.5%? The reality is, you know, that's, that number is in the rearview mirror. We don't know what's going to happen in future years. We built the budget based on our expected, the 23 budget, based on our real expectations for this coming year. You know, the four years after that are quite a ways in the future. We really don't know what inflation is going to be. And so we rely on our long-term averages. And, you know, we'll see what it looks like next year, and we'll adjust the plans for those future years as is needed. But we think that the appropriate thing to do with regard to the inflation rate, that's not, this isn't what's built into next year's budget. This is what's built into the five year, the four years after that, the plan. So you're not adopting a budget for those four years. It's just giving us a feel for where we're going to be, right? So, anyway, that, this plan assumes our historical, roughly historical average of 2.5% inflation in those out years.
The only comment I want to make on this page, and I've mentioned this before, and I've heard from a few citizens about it, is, I actually heard from, sort of after I once mentioned it, is that I think our fund balance, that our policy is too high at 30%. The state requires 8%. I'm not suggesting we go 8%. I think, but 30% in what actually happens, of course, is in the end, it's 40%, sometimes higher. And, you know, the value of money is decreasing before our very eyes. So I think we'd be wise to adjust our policy downward a little, but keeping it well above 8%. And I would like, I don't know if this is the right time, but I would like to engage in a good discussion about that with council and perhaps staff to find out, you know, what are the ramifications to the numbers if we dropped it to 20%? I know I had an earlier discussion early on when I first raised this with Brooke, and I got a good idea of what that translates to in real dollars. But, because I view that as a little bit of a rainy day fund, that cushion, that extra cushion between the 8% and our 30%. And rather than a rainy day fund, it's starting to look like a tsunami fund because of this, the amount of it. And it sticks out to people who read the budget and wondering about, boy, Pinehurst is sitting on all this money. I can handle those questions. But, anyway, I really want to have a discussion about that. I think, I think we, it would make us better husbands of our resources if we just drop that a little.
So here is what that five-year forecast looks like. And I'll start with the tax rate that's built into this plan. Again, we do this every year. And you can see for '23, this reflects that half penny drop from last year, down to 31 cents. You see a slight bump in 2024, and that's in accordance with projections that we made several years ago now, that were, that were required by, in order for us to accommodate changes to our pension withholding requirements that the state levied on us several years ago. It was a year-over-year escalating allocation requirement. And for those of you that are on the council, a few years ago, you recall that I had to meter that out year over year, what it was going to cost to deal with that impact over the period of those years when the pension allocation requirement was growing. And in 2024 was the last of the year, those years. So that's why you see the half penny gain, increase going from '23 to '24. That's legacy. As you can see, the rate, the number, the row below the tax rate line is what was projected in last year's plan. So everything you see in this year's proposal is one cent lower than was forecasted last Moving right, further to the right in FY '25, the tax rate that's built in this plan is, stays the same, going from '24, '25 at 31 and 1/2 cents, and then it bumps again by a penny in 2026. And that's a reflection of growing the library staff and library and archives operating budget in accordance with the expansion of those library and archives services that we'll be undertaking with that project that we're talking about doing in 2025. And then in 20, going from '26 to '27, it would remain flat. So I mentioned that, you know, year over year, you're looking at a penny lower than was proposed last year. If you go back one more year, there's another half cent there. Last year, we dropped a cent, a half a penny from what was projected in the previous year. And so it's, you know, it's great when we can tell this story, but the impact is, it's almost as if we were, we have been able to absorb not only the incorporation of library and archive services, but the expansion of library and archive services without any impact on our tax rate. So, I mean, I guess that's one way to look at it. You can see the full-time equivalents there on the third row. Total general fund operating revenues and expenditures, operating income or loss. Nothing of note there. There's some, you know, there's some different numbers on this table that probably bear some explanation. About 2/3 of the way down the table, you see other financing uses. And that's money coming out of the general fund and going into capital project funds to accomplish the library and archives expansion and the potential carriage house year over year. So in '25, $3.95 million, that's the potential actual construction costs for the library and archives expansion and the design work for a carriage house. And then in '26, you see $3.15 million, that's the potential carriage house construction. Of course, that project is dependent on, you know, some cooperation from local players that we still have to iron out, but that's where it lies in this plan. Whether or not we can actually accomplish that in 2026 remains to be seen. The other line that probably bears some explanation here is the other financing sources in here. And again, that's the ARP money coming into the general fund from the special revenue fund. As I mentioned, given our accounting, the accounting requirements we have to operate by, we can't move it all in this year based on this adopted budget. So we're showing 4.2 million, a little over 4.2 million in '23. And then if we, if at the end of the year, we can't get that other, you know, roughly $1 million in, in this year's operational framework, then we'll, we'll be, that would occur in 2024. Patrick, do you have a question?
Yeah. Going on, capital expenditures, we go from, in '24, we go from 2.1 to 2.8. But that's not including the 3.9 below it under other financing uses? I'm trying to understand the increase of about almost $700,000.
So that's, that's the, you can, the combination of those numbers is total capital requirements. And what you're seeing is that in '25 and '26, you have those two big projects.
Right.
That are being held, that are being handled outside the general fund.
Right.
And they're coming across to fund those capital requirements from going, coming out of the general fund and into a capital projects fund to.
But in other words, we're not double, when we say other financing, we're not counting that twice, those two projects, right?
It's, it's money, like I said, it's, that's, that's not part of, well, it couldn't be part of the 2.8 million, 3.9 is.
Right.
The 2.8 million dollars that you see in FY '25 for capital expenditures is other capital requirements. The 3.9 is for design of the parking structure of carriage house and for the construction-related costs associated with the library and archives. But it has to move out of the general fund into a capital project fund to do that.
Obviously, the library is a, is a real commitment on the part of the village council. But the carriage house is a little more hypothetical, and if that was to move out or not occur, it would have a significant impact on what we're looking at down the road.
That's right. And it is quite a ways out there in the five-year plan.
Right. I would be curious if Brooke could run the numbers by just changing the tax rate across the top from .315, .315, .325, if it was just .31 those three years? Because I'd like to see what impact that would have on our projected fund balance and our operating margins. So I don't need that now.
Happy to do it.
Yeah. Whenever you get to it.
Fund balance will be significantly lower, operating margin would be outside our acceptable limits.
Okay.
We've already done those, I mean, we've done that, so.
I'd like to get it looked. Thanks.
We can show it to you.
Maybe we could work that in on Monday, Monday or Wednesday. We could work that in Monday or Wednesday.
Bring the budget work session.
That'd be great.
You specifically want to see it for keeping 31 cents across the board.
Yeah. See, well, how does that affect all those other numbers?
Yeah, sure.
And you could also sketch out if the carriage house just didn't exist.
Yeah.
See what that does. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff and Brooke.
That wouldn't, taking the carriage house out would give some, provide relief on the fund balance, it would not on the operating margin.
Right.
So I mentioned those two, you know, again, those two key parameters we tend to focus on as we're building this five-year plan at the bottom, projected fund balance. It is relatively high in this, in the beginning of this five-year plan, but you see it actually peaks up again higher in 2024. But then as we bite off those big, two big chunks in '25 and '26, it starts to drop down. And we, and it's still, you know, well above the 30% threshold in 2027, but there are some other capital requirements that are out there, that are just outside the horizon of this plan that we need to be thinking of.
It's well above, it's well above the 38%, 30%. I, that's what always catches my eye. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So I mentioned, I don't know if I need to cover these details here, but this compares the tax rate year over year, and I think I've already talked through all these specifics. You can see in the bow tie stuff right below that table that, you know, increases during operating expenditure pressures in '24. That goes back a ways, there was, I guess it's three years ago now, we were, two years, three years.
I don't suppose.
Had the big recycling hit in the market, and we also were made aware of the state's escalating pension withholdings requirements that necessitated us building us, building into an escalating tax, ad verum tax rate scheme into that year's five-year plan.
I was going to say, I don't suppose we could do this, but then, I know you guys are always capable of doing anything with numbers. If the, if we could make a guesstimate as to what would be the reevaluation on property in '25, '26, and '27, how that would impact those out years. I just, something again to think about for next week or whenever meeting.
That's a pretty tough number, Pat. I don't know.
Well, we know it's going up. We know it's going to go up.
But we don't know when the first revaluation is going to be.
Oh, well, okay, maybe it's not '25, maybe it's '26.
There's, I mean, there's a lot going on there. I mean, a revaluation, it causes us to recalculate, right? So, and what we have, what we have done as a matter of policy in recent years is that we've had, we have, the council has adopted, we've recommended and the council has adopted a CPI-adjusted revenue-neutral tax rate. So there's two things going on there. One is valuations go up, then tax rates come down because we want the overall revenue generated to be the same. But then at the same time, we're also correcting for CPI increases that have changed over that four-year period since the last revaluation. So that drives it back up. It's, how that all plays out is, I guess at this point.
Thanks.
I mentioned our initiative action plans previously, and you've seen this slide before. So I was going to give you the snapshot a week or two, a couple of weeks ago. On the left-hand side of the table, you see our strategic objectives and the information listed in red are the areas of focus that you identified. And then you can see the initiative action plans that are, that are tied to those strategic objectives. And then the annual allocation of funding where appropriate, that's tied to each one of those initiative action plans. I don't, I didn't really intend to go over this in detail. Do you have any questions about this?
I just said, what is the 6.5? Is that the, correspond to something in our plan, in our action plan? Or that's not the number of acres? What is 6.5 there?
I'm sorry, Pat. What are you referring to?
On the public services complex.
Under the initiative action plan.
Yes.
I have to throw a lifeline.
Comp plan. Thank you.
Comp plan, strategy.
Yeah.
Thanks. Didn't know what it was about. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah. And then, again, we talked about this in the previous meeting as well, but the American Rescue Plan Act funds just shy of $5.3 million is what we're going to see in total. And, you know, the good news, for a long, long time, as this was being rolled out, we've been, been told this story that, you know, the potential uses were very restrictive, and our hands were tied. And for a long time, it looked like we weren't even going to be able to use most of these funds. More recently, we got updated guidance that has really freed, freed things up for us. And in accordance with that guidance, and then with, in accordance with the recommendation we're getting from the league municipalities and the school government, this, what we've done with this is allocate it, allocate, move the funds from the special revenue fund into the general fund and allocate it against our salaries and benefits. And we do that because the accounting requirements for us are much less onerous if we do it that way. And it, in the end, what, no matter what we use it for, it's, you know, once we move it into the general fund, it's fungible anyway, right? So it creates capacity for us to do just about anything we want. And a way to think about the way what we've done here is that allow, this allows us to accomplish both the library and archives expansion project and the potential carriage house project without issuing the debt, any of the debt that we had been forecasting as being needed for those two projects. Any further question on those, on that? I think we've, we've talked about this quite a bit already. These are the two capital project funds that we anticipate. These are the two capital project funds that we anticipate in this five-year plan, the library expansion and the Carriage House, and again, no debt issuance projected. And here are some other significant projects in this plan, as I mentioned before, $400,000 over five years, $2 million for pedestrian facilities, stormwater drainage improvements, about another $2 million. Synthetic turf on Cannon Park Fields 1 and 2, so that's both of the, the baseball fields in Cannon Park. Streetscape improvements that I mentioned, so there's $200,000 on the 23 budget, and then this is over the five-year plan for continued efforts in that regard. In FY '27, there's still that $1 million placeholder for, to put in whether, you know, whether it's, you know, sinking a well and putting in septic services and putting in, you know, some of the, for example, restrooms, and maybe it might be putting in walking trail, or some of the, just initial investment in the park out there that would start to get us down the road, road toward the, the realization of the, the plan that's been developed. And then $425,000 for land acquisition for the public services complex, as I mentioned before. 26 evaluations in this plan, I think you all know that with their three, three different types or ways that we think about evaluations, the biggest ones are birdies, they're the most, most complex things, and so we bring in together a multifunctional team to do those. Aces are a little bit smaller scale, still a little bit, probably, you know, two or three multifunctional people that work on those things, and then there's, there's the less formal evaluation. So, 23, 26 evaluations in this plan includes one birdie for document imaging, a requirement that we've recognized for a very long time, which is very comp, very complicated to unravel that problem set across the village staff. And then there are also five aces that you can see listed there, and then numerous other smaller evaluations that are built in the plan. Next steps. So, we mentioned earlier that we have some budget work sessions scheduled for next week. We originally advertised those to be occurring in this room, and that's, if we do need the, to do the budget work session on the 18th, that can still happen, but we have, some elections are gonna be occurring in this room. Voting is gonna be occurring in this room on, on the 16th, so.
17.
Sorry?
17. Voting's a 17.
They may need to set up the room.
Is there a setup? Is the point?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. It's, it's a setup for it.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna do that, that May 16 budget workshop in the council conference room. It'll be a little bit crowded in there, but we've done it in there, in there in the past, so.
Yeah.
It's feasible. We typically don't get a lot of public participation for that anyway, so. And then, May 24 will be the opportunity to hear from the public. This is their first real detailed glimpse at, at this budget, and they have this opportunity to come back on the 24th and tell us what, what their thoughts are in a public hearing. And then, potentially, you would have the opportunity to adopt on the, on June 14th. Of course, we try to give you that first opportunity, the first meeting in June, so that we have a fallback in case there's something you, you want us to, to fix or take corrective action on, or do, do something different. So, I think that's it. Any other questions on the 2023 Strategic Operating Plan?
A lot of work went into this. Thank you very much. It's a lot of puzzle pieces that had to be arranged, and I'm sure it took a lot of people. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for this, Jeff, and just thinking again, schedule-wise, June 14 will be our first meeting in June, so we could adopt the budget then, but we have the fallback for, would be the 28th, I guess. But we have to adopt it by June 30.
Yeah.
So, we'll be all set.
And you know, it, it wasn't that long ago that systematically the council considered adopting it right after the, the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
During that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Years ago, we, you know, we had the flexibility to move it out.
Yeah.
But this gives you the opportunity to think about what the public might say to you, and, you know, maybe give us some direction to, to do something.
Right.
In case there's something, some change that has to be made.
No, I think it's important that we hear from the public and react to that if need be with any, any changes, and deal with it on the 14th of June. And we'll, I think, move to that procedure. Jeff, this has been very helpful, it'll certainly facilitate our discussions on the 16th and the 18th, so we thank you for that. We'll go on now into the next agenda items. Is there any other business that the council members have to bring to this regular meeting? Seeing them move on into comments from attendees, I'm gonna close up my budget book. I have, I have to say, I have a shorter list than I expected, and all of you have been here waiting to speak. I have six names, and as we have done in the past, if anybody is here who has not signed up, if time allows, council agrees, we'll consider adding you to the list. I'm going to call Mr. Cliff Sumrell first, and that would be followed by Philip Sonia, and I'm gonna stand up and stretch my legs as Mr. Cliff Sumrell approaches the desk here, sir. You may speak either from the pedestal, or you can sit at the table there.
No, this is good. Well, my name is Cliff Sumrell, and I'm from Pinehurst, and I've been here quite a while, and I do wanna congratulate you people for going through that report. You need to congratulate me too. But nevertheless, talking about something that's very important to our community, and this is done from the University School of Local Government Law, and a lady by the name of Rebecca Badgett, who holds a law degree in North Carolina School of Law. She's a profession in the fundamentals of local government. She has a master's degree in teaching and advises in short-term rentals, which is essentially the topic that I'm working on. Residential zoning ordinances and short-term rentals. This is her article, written in 8/24/18. That's Rebecca Badgett. Now, I wanna quote from that, but the important thing I want you to understand is that we're working toward comprehension, not working toward argument, but comprehension. I did send you a memo and explained my position and the position of a lot of these folks behind me, and what this is all about and what our concern is. I'm giving this quotation from that article, follow me closely. This is Rebecca talking. Quote, "It is my thinking that if local government wishes to exclude STRs from specific zoning districts, the best practice is to amend the local code of ordinances. Local governments," and I say this again, "local governments have the authority to classify a certain land use as commercial, and this holds true to the STR context. In short, STRs are a business. As well, it would be reasonable to zone the STRs for commercial use. To do so, the ordinance should distinguish a transient use from residential use, clarifying that renting to transients is considered a commercial issue which is prohibited in residential areas." Do I make myself clear there? It is prohibited in residential areas. When we talk about the rights of property, we're not talking about what I'm talking about here, we're talking about a commercial use in a residential community. Article, Article 11 and Article 12 of the General Statutes 160D prohibits STRs from premises or ordinances permission. In other words, we can't push these people around with ordinances and that sort of thing. However, STRs may be impacted by heightening zoning permits. In short, we're talking about a business in a residential community. You work on your ordinances, and this whole thing can be corrected, and we've been talking about it for some time. As a matter of fact, we have 400 of those STRs in our communities today, and some of them, three of which I know of that are in my community, are in a community. Changing your ordinance is all you need to do to correct this. Most of these people behind me agree with this and are saying, let's get these STRs where they belong and not in our communities. All sorts of things can happen as a result of this, and many of them you've described in all kinds of articles and situations. But the bottom line is comprehension. I think you understand what we're talking about. The urgency of this situation is probably as close as your budget for the whole damn city. So let's do something about this issue before we're here en masse and doing things you may not be happy with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sumrell.
That concludes my report.
As a reminder, I asked speakers to try to keep your, oop. Try to, remind everyone, try to keep your comments to about three minutes, will be some flexibility there, but thank you very much. Philip Sonia is next, followed by David Byers.
Hi, sir. Can you hear me okay? My name's Philip Sonia, I'm a 15-year resident of Pinehurst, joined on Bedford Circle. Stated earlier, I'm a retired Army officer, completing my doctor in public policy at UNC. I'm actually the one that referred Rebecca Badgett to you, or to the council. The reason why I did that is I wanted to communicate a couple different items. Public policy helps you to understand what you should do and what the repercussions are. The school of government tells you how you can do what you wanna do. Those are two very different things. I read the articles posted on the website, namely the local editorial pages for both for and against STRs. I reviewed the claims from residents concerning inappropriate behavior. I listened to the representatives from both parties listing their concerns. I discussed the issue through multiple perspectives and a host of economic and public policy papers. Please note that while I read the externally funded papers and news reports sent to the council, I, like any academic, excluded these papers as they fund, as they provided a certain point of view, a funded point of view, and did not carry any statistical findings. I wanna provide you some of those findings along with a brief introduction of where we all at. So we talked about trying to do our budget data here today. Let me restate, let me restate something. We're in the beginning stages of a significant recession, and one that's based on historical data that'll be deeper and long-lasting than the 2008 recession, guaranteed. The bond yield curves are inverted. That is not an opinion, that's a fact. That signals a recession. The down-dowling just for average today is down 11% overall year-to-date, mid-cap's down 16%, small-cap's down 22%. Inflation's growing at a rate not seen since 1970s, while undoubtedly see multiple necessary interest rate hikes in the coming months. That will slow a lot of this growth rate that you've been seeing in STRs. The reason why those houses are bought is because interest rates are very low, and that's an easy investment to put funds into. Many will say that Pinehurst is different for recessions, and there's some valid reasons for that, due to golf community and the positive effect of military retirement community. However, I'll caution that the economic situation now is more dire than people realize. There are vulnerable population sets here, and there's a host of negative externalities that correlate with economic distress. Unemployment, crime, impetus for large investment groups to secure properties, are right. The concern you have for large investment groups that come in here is 8% away. Property values drop 8%, they'll move in. How do I know that? Because I asked them. Decreased revenue for civic projects, and all these are a cause of a large strain on local government structures as increases cost receiving less real revenue. My counsel is not wise to rush an opinion that would have negative economic effects, nor potentially embroil the community in a legal battle in this environment. The academic works on economic benefits of STRs in local economy are generally not refutable. Even in the small group discussions, there's no real challenge of the positive economics impact from STRs, but really on the quality of life. The economic benefits locally through our small business are undeniable, a benefit to them, not, a benefit not only to them, but the entire community and the government as well, who is funded through their revenue. However, there are multiple studies that lay out real property values lost when STRs banned. Yes, there are current STR models when STRs are banned, and every one of them shows a very large negative impact on property values. Some at 10%, some at 8%, and some at 30% in New Orleans. And I'll quote those if you'd like me to go through each one of them, I have them all here. I'm keenly aware regulations have a real cost on local government through administration and enforcement. Whatever identified, whatever decision identifies should work to minimize those costs, and I really applaud your efforts, Mr. Sambord, in trying to keep those costs down. In economics and public policy, we stress that there's no solutions, there are only trade-offs. Solutions are often preconceived visions, and more often than not, produce significant unanticipated negative results. Trade-offs, on the other hand, are rational discussions that balance risk and rewards across multiple perspectives, and populations produce positive results. In the word of Mrs. Hoagman today, regulations are an idea of what you should do, but often they don't meet the dream. It's my informed opinion that we, as residential resort community, should take cooperative action to address common concerns. In doing so, I think we should reinforce our collective vision for Pinehurst and achieve our mission, which I quote, "is to promote, enhance, and sustain the quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors." Please note the mission statement includes right now, all three of those. Residents, businesses, and visitors are critical to the residential resort community because they provide the, the revenue that allows everything else to happen.
Mr. Sonia, you're now at four and a half minutes, so I really have to have you conclude your comments, sir. Thank you.
Two items, is there, there is an Airbnb policy, talked to them today, Airbnb City Portal, recommended that we communicate them, I'll provide the data, and that we do have an article of cooperation right now with over 100 individuals signed up on it to meet all of the concerns, and I'd like to present that next week if I may.
Thank you very much. David Byers, followed by Jeff Heintz. Mr. Byers here.
My name is David Byers, I live at 125 McCaskill Road in Pinehurst.
David, could you bring that microphone just a little closer? Thank you very much.
Is that better?
Sure. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be nearly as eloquent as that last man was. I made some notes before the meeting, and I'm not sure I can even read them, but I'll do my best.
Please.
I attended the meeting here about six weeks ago, and I presented some specific issues that I had had with the short-term rental that is across the street from me at 65 Blue Road. At the next meeting, the manager of that rental property came up and implied that statements made by homeowners were not in, at the last meeting were not entirely true. It's very easy to make a blanket statement like that. It's much more difficult to stand up and give facts to dispute something that is said. I can, I can tell you that what I say is what I've lived. I don't come here with talking points written by somebody else. I have lived with this experience across the street from me for almost 12 years. I gave, I'm not gonna stand up here and recite what I spoke about last time, I think that's, you know, kind of a waste of your time and, and mine, but I, I wanna tell you about one incidence that happened last week. And my wife addressed a letter that I, I hope you've received, in which she talks more about the issue, but she was on a walk around the neighborhood. She turned onto our street and was coming down in front of our house when a black SUV full of several gentlemen came up behind her, and they made an inappropriate comment. It wasn't what they said, but the way they said it that was very disturbing. And then they proceeded to turn into the short-term rental at 65 Blue Road. Now, my wife, some of you may know, is a very strong and independent person. She has no problem standing up and confronting somebody when they're speaking wrong. But I have a 23-year-old disabled daughter that has, that is socially and has learning disabilities. And my concern is, what if that would have been her? What if she had have been in the front yard when this car approached? She is not, she does not, she is very trust, trustful. She is very caring and loving, and she has no sense of fear. My concern is, what if that would have been her? We, we limit her access, we, we, she's, she's not allowed to, like, walk in the neighborhood by herself, but to live in a neighborhood, two blocks from one of the most premier golf resorts in the world, in a neighborhood surrounded by million-dollar homes, not mine, not mine, but it's homes around me, and to have to live with the concern for your wife and your daughter in your front yard is something that I just don't, I can't imagine. This is a very serious issue. It's not all about money. It's not all about money, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sumrell. Mr. Jeff Heintz, followed by Peter Green.
Jeff Heintz, 225 Lake Forest Drive, southwest in Pinehurst. Excuse me. I wouldn't even try to follow that. Let's take the next three minutes and think about what that gentleman just said.
Thank you, Mr. Heintz. Pete Green.
Thank you, council members. It's been a while since I've been up here. As far as short-term rentals go, I can speak on both sides of the subject on this. My wife and I actually owned a condo in six in Juniper Creek, which we sold a year and a half ago. It was Airbnb, got it as an investment, fixed it up, turned around and sold it after using it as an Airbnb for two years. No problems. It's made with, got with all the neighbors, gave them my phone number, made sure if they had a problem to call me. Never had an issue there except with a couple of the renters, but we got out of the business. It was a pain in the butt, if you want to know the truth of the matter. I have two short-term rentals next door to me, two to my right and one on the other side. This is on Linden Road inside the historic district. One is a five-bedroom house, and it is no surprise for me to come home to see 15, 17 cars in the driveway. It's a double driveway. We have been there and seen 20 to 30 people, golfers, in the backyard playing wiffleball. They've put in a pool since then. I've met the owner. He's a really nice guy, lives in Washington, DC, comes down three times a year. My wife and I have been out on the back porch before and got a contact high from the marijuana smoke coming from next door. I mentioned this to him, to the owner, who did come down on a visit, and he said, "Yeah, it's nothing." My cleaning lady sent me a picture of a dinner plate full of cocaine that they had left on the dinner table, dining room table. These guys come here for the joy of playing golf at Pinehurst. I get it. They have fun. The problem is, is they're all hours of the evening. They're loud. My dogs go constantly nuts. This guy's put in a pool, so we're waiting to see how that works out this summer. I can actually hear the house next to his louder sometimes with the amount of golfers that are in it, again, in the historic district, which we try, I've got to have a permit to cut down a tree or put up a fence. I'm curious as to what you guys plan on doing. I'm not saying that we need to eliminate them. I'd like to see anything inside the historic district taken out as far as a short-term Need a permit. Make them have a permit. Charge them a tax. Do safety inspections, because if I've got a five-bedroom house with 20 people staying in it, that can't be safe. Have a three-strike rule, three complaints, legitimate complaints to the police department, whether it's noise complaints, after curfew, things of that nature. Three of those strikes, they lose their permit or they are no longer allowed to keep a short-term rental. Limit the capacity, hotel tax. You've got to do something with these because of the simple fact that we moved here to take care of my in-laws, who fell in love with this place and lived here for 30-something years. It was a great golf community. It was quiet. It was easy to live here. Right now, with what I've got, it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That concludes the list of sign-ups. However, I think council would be open to the idea of additional persons who may wish to speak who did not sign up. Is that all right with council?
Yes.
You all right with that? Yes, ma'am. If you would come to the podium and please give me your name, I'll sign you up that way.
Laura Sum -- geez, I've got a good voice. You all know me. Laura Sumrell, 12 LaCosta Lane. I think it is a zoning issue. Go back in time when you were a kid. I think some of you are old enough like me to remember when mom talked to the neighbors over the backyard fence, or your neighbor asked you to take care of their dog where they were gone for the weekend, or maybe your neighborhood had a potluck. Well, guess what? In Oakmont Circle, we still do all those things. Oakmont Circle is the other side of Beulah Hill. We're over there by Lost Tree. We have a pure residential bedroom community. We're not in downtown. We're not on Linden Road. We are residential bedroom community. No business belongs there. If I ran a garage sale three days a week, you'd be running me out of town. We're just asking for zoning. I understand people have a right to do something with their homes if that's what they want to do, and maybe a grandfather clause that's sunsetted later on, but in our neighborhood, we have kids with tricycles and basketball courts out there. This is truly a pure middle-class, nice family neighborhood. And I'm not going to say anything about residents being bad or good. Most of ours, the three in our neighborhood Cliff mentioned, are less than a year old. It's a trend, and I've talked to an owner of one of these who says they may work themselves out, like the other gentleman said, and they'll start selling them off because they're too much work, but in the short term, we have a lot of little kids riding bikes. We all know, we wave, we go slow. Not everybody does if you're not from the neighborhood. So we're just asking to look into zoning and to isolate certain neighborhoods that just are off limits. This is not proper. I remember once one of our cities wanted to put a high school in a residential neighborhood. We said, "Look in the yellow pages. Where's the high schools? They're all in business districts. Then keep them out of our neighborhood." That's all we're asking is the pure residential communities. Let's remember what it was like to have neighbors, not businesses, coming and going every weekend. It's very disruptive emotionally. It really is.
Thank you. Other speakers? Yes, Carol.
I figured since I'm here, I will speak. I have an interesting point of view because we actually, Airbnb, our little guest suite out, just because we weren't using it. But I live across the street from David, and I can 100% confirm what he says is true. When we first moved here, I think it was the first weekend we moved in, and there were 11 guys next door to us, which is the same house he was talking to or talking about, out until 11:00 PM, yelling, laughing. We couldn't get my son to bed. Sometimes there is marijuana out there, and my son is six, so we do not want him exposed to that. I'm not sure where I stand on the Airbnb because I understand the other side of it in terms of the economic advantages, but I just wanted to make sure that I put my voice out here that it detracts from what brings most people to Pinehurst in the first place.
Thank you. Are there other people who wish to speak in public comments tonight about any subject? Yes, sir?
My name is Matt Kenny. I live at 60 Barrett Road West.
Repeat that at the microphone, please.
My name is Matt Kenny. I live at 60 Barrett Road West. I've put together an economic impact statement to show what our short-term rental does in terms of bringing to business to Pinehurst every year, and I'm going to share that with you guys to give you an idea of what one unit does to bring business to the businesses of this community. We've been doing this for three years. We've never had a complaint. We're friends with all our neighbors. We take great care to make sure we're responsible. If you want to have licenses or you want to have a tax, I'm open to it. You know, we do everything right with what we do. Our neighbors came over this weekend, and we had a Kentucky Derby party. I think if you interviewed every one of my neighbors, they would say that what we do, we do responsibly, and we take care not to offend any of our neighbors. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Are there other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments period for the regular meeting. And is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session?
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Motion by Jane Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Pazzella, all in favor of adjourning the regular meeting and moving to the work session. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The work session will commence after a little bit of development here in the front of the room will commence at 7 o'clock. Thank you.